Well, folks, it's 6:02. I see the council members are here. And so I will call to meeting the special meeting of the common council. It is Tuesday, October 6th. It is 6:02 PM and we are having this special meeting via Zoom. Candace, welcome back. Is Candace doing roll call?
Okay, I unmuted myself. Rookie mistake.
Not a problem.
Thanks for having me back. We'll start with roll call. Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Barbara Doss. Ken Killian. Did we lose Ken?
We lost Ken.
We lost Ken.
Okay, I did see him up there. Robin Klein.
Yeah.
Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
So Ken must be having some kind of problem. Okay, so the items on our work session agenda tonight are the three-year strategic plan, 21 to 23, and the CIP budget, the first of which is the strategic plan. Is Ben here or is he gonna do this, Adam?
Don't you get me, I think.
That's all right. I just didn't know if we were, if I had started before Ben came and he was, you're expecting him or what? I see Ken is back, Candace.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm turning it over to you, Adam.
Sounds good. So, all right, good evening, everybody. So this is kind of the final stage of our three-year strategic plan that we've been working on. So we kick-started this pretty much early in the year and really kind of turned it into gear in summer with having our kind of community dialogue sessions, a couple of different work sessions to go over the strategic plan. So the first thing I'd like to do is obviously, you know, number one, thank Will who was on this call. He did an amazing job with this survey and I think really helped the city to give us some concrete data that we can continue to look at for years to come as far as, you know, impressions and things like that. So what I asked for him to do is one more time, just kind of come to the council tonight and then he can go home and do whatever he wants to do for the rest of the night and we'll thank him very much. But just give us kind of a brief overview of kind of the finalization of the survey, some of the trends that he saw. I think I emailed the council the majority of the information so that you saw it. But this will kind of give an opportunity one last time to go over, you know, some of the trends that he saw and just kind of the information before we go into kind of the draft final document. So Will, I will pitch it off to you.
Hello, I feel like a student saying I haven't fully completed my homework. I wanted to have a final, like, document to hand in tonight and it's just not quite there to my liking. So I will be finishing that up, but I have the data, it's just a little scattered. So if I can share my screen, I will start with... Let's see, show all windows, I have too many open, this one, okay. So I wanted to make this as user-friendly as I could for everybody. But in short, we had a little over 900 valid respondents to the survey. I removed anyone who did not, essentially did not answer anything. They just opened the survey and unfortunately they get counted and I yanked them out. But if they answered even one little thing, they got counted in here. This means that not everything you read will have 900 respondents. Some people chose to only do the first couple and maybe got distracted, you know, whatever it might be. Some of the big takeaways, the people we are looking at were overwhelmingly white, which jives decently well with the demographics of Grant County. I would have actually expected to see this a little bit lower. The, we had about 53% men and this is likely due to the college. We actually had a lot of students within the age range of college responding and the college is 65% men as of last year. I didn't look this year. So in about half of them were college age group. Now, doesn't mean they are actually in college, but-ish. And then the, about a fifth of them were middle-aged and I'm now in that category. For, and I can show you some of the more graphs later, but because of the age group, many of them had only lived in Platteville for five or fewer years. Most of them lived in the city of Platteville itself. And Bar, no, Eileen, I think this was the question you had, the rent versus own, it's 50/50 again. And most of them were in one-family households. Most people lived with spouses and about a fifth had children. And we didn't have very many people who owned property but didn't live here, which was surprising to me given that we have so many rental properties. This may indicate simply that people who have rental properties also live here. And most people worked, most of them actually, half of them worked kind of in town or worked outside of the house in town and about, I think it came down to about 66% worked period. Big takeaways, and I'll do a real quick skimming of the tables for the math nerds in the room. But we did basically five main categories, quality of life, impressions of community resources, opinions on opportunities, satisfaction with city services, and then information engagement preferences. For the most part, people were overall average in terms of their responses to impressions of Platteville. They tended on the average to good side. The ones that kind of were on the lower side were to, as a place to visit, as a place to retire or as a place to work. For impressions, education, nature, and ease of travel were by far the clearest, best aspects of our community, according to the respondents. Opportunities for enrichment was actually the lowest and sense of community and reputation were followed as second lowest. This, again, can be easily skewed because of if we have a fair number of college students, their sense of community is, you know, it is temporary to them, which is one reason why they engage in some of the less desirable behaviors. And same with the reputation aspect there. They might be looking at the reputation of the university and not necessarily the city itself, though they're highly correlated. Average to good educational opportunities, shopping was below average and diversity and employment opportunities were on the low end. People are very satisfied, generally overall were fairly satisfied with services in town. Fire, trash, library, all were kind of on the high end. Nothing got below a 3.0, so nobody on average hated anything in particular, which was nice to see. Green spaces and EMS were kind of next in line there. The lowest, Adam, of no surprises, streets and code enforcement. And I did see that a lot in the qualitative comments about both keeping up with, but also kind of equitable enforcement of code and particularly the rentals. And the widest, I thought this was interesting, it stuck out, people had the most varied opinions about our water service. Just thought I would point it out. Most people liked Facebook and emails for updates, website followed close behind. We, and I will hand, I will send this to Adam who can then give it to the entire, anyone who wants it. This is a more detailed breakdown of some of the numbers. I decided not to list what others said because it wasn't exactly suitable for polite company in a few cases. They were primarily protested being asked about the question itself. And again, the age category, and what I plan to do is to finish up, I will provide a little narrative for each kind of section. So that, you know, for those who are more text-based, I'm so used to tables, I know others aren't. For jobs, again, we had about a third of people full-time, a third of people part-time and a third of people not working. Given the 10%, that was a little high, but remember we were doing this in August and September. That actually makes sense, given the state's overall trend. And about, what did I say? About 70% of those who worked said they worked in Platteville, either in their own homes or in the community. Very few people, and I was a bit surprised that we didn't have much drain, I guess, out to Dubuque. And then for our respondents, you know, we see that the bulk of people, about half are under five years. And then we actually had a really good portion of people who are over 20 years in terms of living here. I can, upon request, and I did get a couple requests for breakdowns about museum and library, and I will do those. But if someone wishes to say, okay, how do these differ, I'm happy to run those numbers. They might not look nearly as pretty as this, though. And then some of the breakdowns of the specific questions asked, and I thought this would be maybe a little easier way of seeing it. Yellow is the above average, gray is about as average, and that nice russet color is a below average. So tends towards the higher end in general. The only thing that really got the terrible was strangely retire. And I will share and give you a couple more pieces before I free you. And so I have to get a few more pieces in here. But for example, I broke these down so that you can see them visually. Adult education, the yellow line again is quite high. Places where we see shopping, you can see the below average line is quite high here. So this, if you're a visual person that prefers this kind of presentation, this is available. This one is gonna be a nightmare to make visual, but you can see overall where some of the numbers are. The averages are these, this way to look at this, or anything over four is above average. Our library is above average, our fire service was above average. Or, you know, on the more satisfied end of things. The impressions, here you can see, nobody, nobody failed. Well, enrichment got a D+, but on a 1 to 100 scale, we got some high, you know, some Cs and some Bs there. And you can see that down here as well. And last, no, I already showed you this one. Opportunity, I did, okay, I think I got all those. Some of the other data I can provide upon request is, you know, if, if some of the time where I asked where is home? Well, we had California, Chicago, 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 Elkhorn came up twice. So I'm happy to give some of these, occasionally you got people who said home is where they say is home, which was very helpful. If anyone wants to kind of dig into some of that. My last thing I will share with you. Some of the word clouds I thought would be helpful. Okay, I can do that, that works. Thank you for your patience with this. No, not that big, okay. So this one was the word cloud generated for long-term on one of the surveys. There are two links and I can't, Qualtrics won't let me smush them together. So you get to see basically two images for each one. But for long-term goals, community, better building, center. So we saw a lot of the rec center, children's center kind of thing, parks, restaurants were words that came up. This one is also again the word cloud for the long-term, just from the other survey. Improve campus, community, downtown sidewalks. This is the magic wand, if they could do whatever they wanted right now with the magic wand. These are some of the words that came up frequently. Trails, streets, restaurants again. Honestly, there was a huge difference. Splash pad and pickleball were mentioned many times. I'm not sure why pickleball. We saw business, parks, et cetera, and a fair number of people asking for that post-COVID celebration. In the short term, words like enforce came up much more, property downtown, police. We saw a few more specific things pop out here, snow removal, et cetera. So it was a lot more of the routine maintenance kind of things is what I was seeing. And I think that's about it for me, okay. I am happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple questions, Killian. As far as the people that are older, what were your categories as far as age, over 65?
75 was the cap, so if you're 75 or over, there was a 65 to 74, 10-year ranges down. I intentionally went a little higher trying to get some of the, the 60-year-old cohort because that is becoming larger with the baby boomers now in the age group.
Were there many responding over 65?
Um.
My next.
So over 65 was about eight and a half percent.
My next question is, what about code enforcement? Is there, is it a matter of too strict, too lenient?
Um, there was a bit of a mix on some of the qualitative items. I think that some of it was more about consistency. And I saw that also a little bit with some of the permitting and building inspection was commented on a couple times. But it sounded like a fair number of people wanted slightly more strict, especially for student rental type areas. But other people commented that they felt they had been on the short end of that stick a couple times.
My last question is, what about water service? What is meant by water service? Poor quality water, poor supply of water?
I believe it's more the quality of water. We simply asked them about their satisfaction with water service. And based on the comments I saw on a few of those, some people wanted to defluoridate our water. I think a few others were talking about the high nitrates in the area. Generally about the quality of the water more than lack of service.
Thank you.
Okay, Eileen, do you have any questions of Will?
I do not have any questions. I liked the survey though, Will, good information.
Thank you.
Isaac, any questions?
No questions, nice presentation.
Kathy, any questions?
No questions, but I'll echo Will that the information you were able to garner and the format you put it in is awesome. Very much appreciated.
I promise it'll be a little prettier in the final draft.
Okay, Jason?
Nothing right now.
Robin?
Say all of the comments, will you submit those?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Ken has asked, Ken, do you have any additional questions? Ken?
No more questions now.
Okay, all right. And Will, I have no questions, but I certainly echo and I think I sent you a message after, after your presentation before as to how, how helpful this is and particularly the graphics that you have provided. I really like those word clouds, they really, they really somehow help, I don't know.
Yeah. 20 pages of comments, that's for sure.
Yeah. And many of you, I don't know if you've seen Adam's and Ben's presentation of the strategic plan yet, but some of your charts have made it into the planning, the document.
Okay.
All right, so there you go.
Thank you.
I hope they remembered to cite you as the provider. Really looked at that, there we go. Okay, Adam, we're back.
All right, sounds good, Will. Well, if you want to stick around, you certainly can, but otherwise we got stuff to do, we understand that as well. So feel free to do whatever. I am going to share my screen here. All right. So what kind of this equates to is the creation of a finalized document that we will be looking for the council to adopt as the official kind of final version of the strategic plan. So this is something that, you know, Ben Bilkey, our city manager intern, and I spent a lot of time on and trying to put kind of the finishing touches and something where we didn't want to have a document. Obviously, that was too information-intensive, but we also wanted to try to have something that really kind of spelled out all of the information. So this is kind of what we came up with. Obviously, if there are changes or additions that the council would like to see, we certainly will do that. I think kind of citing the Will with some information is definitely something we need to get in here. So we'll do that, so that's a good note to put in. But just kind of wanted to briefly go through this and just show you what kind of, you know, we're thinking of putting into the final document. So obviously, we just kind of have the cover page here that talks about the plan. The next one is just a brief introduction that talks about the brief history of Platteville for anybody that would want to see this. And then directly references our inclusivity statement as that has been kind of an ongoing process throughout the previous strategic plan and one that we continue to work on in this one. Then briefly, it kind of goes through the community engagement aspect of how the plan was created. So it shows really the three phases of how this plan was formalized. So it started really with the phase one, which occurred from July to August, which was the strategy brainstormings where, you know, city manager, the city manager intern reviewed other strategic plans, looked at the developing city goals that we have and then identified kind of the community strengths that we saw in those plans as well as ours. Phase two then was really the community dialogue portion and that was August and September where we had the city survey that was out there, we had the community dialogue session, we had the work sessions, obviously, with the council. And that really allowed us to kind of reevaluate the city goals that we had in the previous strategic plan and look at the ones that would be in the current. And then phase three is kind of what we're in right now, which is really the finalization planning stage where we finalize the city goals. We've developed some milestones that we want to try to hit. And then, you know, after if this plan would be adopted, we then would be communicating the plan to our stakeholders. So the residents, community groups. Over here on the other side, just briefly kind of makes mention to the two really kind of community dialogue slash work sessions that we had on the fourth, where basically we went through and kind of jotted down all the information that was received from the public and then also through the staff and the council kind of jotting ideas and then creating the votes. So then obviously, we want to give credit to the survey that was done and the results. So this is something that we'll kind of update now that we have the additional information from Will and put some more information in here. But it just briefly talks about, you know, for over a month, the city of Platteville conducted the survey to increase community engagement. It asked residents, college students, business owners to rank areas of Platteville and then kind of goes through some of the process. So it talks about the quality of life that was on there, mentions the impressions, you know, the areas that Platteville is doing very well in. And then it talks about, you know, an area requiring future emphasis would be the opportunity for shopping, which received, you know, the negative or not negative, but lowest ranking out of the group. Then obviously, it just kind of highlights some of the other things where, you know, the survey respondents were asked to provide their impressions on local issues, you know, ranked from education, safety, ease of travel. You know, an area of emphasis as well kind of indicated would be on enrichment, community and reputation, which received the lowest rankings. Again, respondents overall were satisfied with the services provided in Platteville. As he mentioned, no service received lower than a three. Talks about the ones that received the highest. As indicated, most respondents wanted to be updated via either Facebook, email or the website. So that's something we'll have to take into account. And then just briefly kind of talks about some of the demographic information that he just went over. Again, then kind of make a mention to the word clouds. You know, during the process, we had asked, as we asked the council, we also asked the public to kind of think about three things. One being what they would like to see in six months, one after three years, and then if money was no object. And kind of going through some of those respondents, you know, some of the main themes we saw was economic development, where respondents asked for a new restaurant or a business. Fire station came up, community center, improved focus on marketing, community storytelling and events. Street repairs was one that was relatively, increased diversity and inclusion efforts, affordable housing, housing stock, you know, supports for museums and arts and increased broadband. So a lot of the things that, you know, we took out of those comments is what got finalized into our goals. So then that obviously led to what we call the strategic planning framework, where then during the September 8th, 2020 common council meeting, there was a work session where we basically created what we were calling the community value success factors, which was, you know, having a safe welcoming and engaged community, thoughtful development and prosperous economy and quality infrastructure amenities and services. So then led by the city manager, staff organized priorities for each critical success factor and develop action steps to achieve each of these. So then we go into the goals. So obviously, under safe welcoming and engaged community, we had four goals that came out of that where one was a new and updated fire station. And then we have kind of the three years of what are the things we would like to focus on. We have to create inclusive diversity committee, tell a better story of Platteville and then increase focus on promoting Platteville's history and historical preservation. So the thought process would be as we, if we approve this, if the council approves this, it'd be very similar to how we've done this in the past, where every year, usually in December or January, we will create action steps based on each of the year goals that we have. So there'll be a document that will go in front of the council in consideration of, okay, after talking with staff, here are some of the things we're going to do as far as trying to achieve these, you know, highlighted items. And then the council will prove it and throughout the year will provide updates and opportunities and kind of things that we're working on and benchmarking to see, you know, how we're stacking against these, these goals. Again, under thoughtful development and prosperous economy, the three goals that are under there is number one, to recruit a new business with 50 to 75 jobs each year. Again, there's the three years of how we would try to achieve that. Number two is increased quality of housing, so three kind of steps of action plans that we would do to achieve that. And then continue to grow the tax base and be fiscally responsible. So steps and actions that we want to take in trying to continue to grow our tax base and then also be fiscally responsible. And then finally is the quality infrastructure amenities and services goal. So we have four goals that came out of this. One is a community center for seniors and youth. Two is to continue the conversation of how we improve broadband services throughout the city and the community. Three are museum upgrades, so specific priorities that we would like to see for the museum. And then number four is obviously expanding the city's camera system. So looking into ways that we can continue that capital item that was kind of created in 2020, you'll see coming up obviously in the capital improvement discussions, but finding ways to kind of upgrade that system. And then pretty much, this is kind of the, the last piece of the puzzle here is just closing it out. So obviously, if there are any kind of suggestions, edits or additions, please let me know. But our intention would be that this document will be coming up as an action item at the October 13th common council meeting. And then once, if it would be approved, then as staff will start working on creating kind of that framework of, you know, starting with 2021 and creating a goals list that the council would then kind of approve and then we're off and running.
Will this be action on the whole document?
Yes. That's the intention. Barbie, are I mute?
Very good. All right, too bad Ben isn't here to offer, so that we might offer him, thanks for doing this. But it's not easy to funnel all of this stuff into such a document. So I guess what we'll do is ask if people have ask if people have comments. So this would be the framework. This is like, some people would call these strategic initiatives, and then you would make goals. In this plan, it's goals, and now you create the strategic objectives. So, you know, it's all a matter of which you do. But for each 2021 goal, there would be strategic initiatives or
Yep.
subgoals or action steps developed that would be implemented. So, Eileen, questions, comments?
No, I don't have any questions or comments at this time.
Okay, Isaac.
No questions or comments.
Kathy.
Um, just to note that I'm not sure what page it is, but it's where we tell a better story of Platteville. For 2021, to organize a subcommittee of community partners, could you please add the Chamber of Commerce in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, Jason.
Um, nothing right now.
Uh, Robin.
Nothing right now.
And Ken.
Well, I was looking at museum upgrades and comparing it to CIP, and it says in 2021, we robed the Hammer Robbins building. So when that comes up in the CIP, I guess I want to ask about it there, too. That's it.
Okay, as Adam said, this document with the one addition, and thank you Kathy, will be on the council agenda at our next meeting, which is the 13th for approval. It would actually be, other than public hearing information, the only so because we didn't really forward anything except the mask thing and the zoning, but those both take public hearings. So this will be on the agenda for action on the 13th. Okay, Adam. We're done with strategic plan. Well, we're not done. We're getting a good start. But we're done talking about it tonight.
Sounds good.
So let us move on to number two.
Thing I have.
Barb. Pardon me, Ken?
I have one additional thing on their survey results that says a new fire station. Another place that says something about updating the station. So it's not consistent.
Gotcha.
Say that you're gonna see the other one that's, this one, I don't know what, there's no page number here. This one says a new fire station. I'm looking at partly new and update depending upon what this survey says as far as from the survey group. Do you have differences there?
Sure.
Well, can I actually think it says new slash updated? So I don't think it's saying new fire station. It's not saying updated fire station. It's saying one or the other.
It does say it. I'll show it to you.
Okay. All right.
Survey results.
Oh, on the survey results. Okay. All right, Adam, do you want to take off on the CIP, or is that Nicola, or is that just?
I will, yep, I can take that one. So I'm going to do the same thing here and share my screen. Everybody see the PowerPoint.
Yeah, but Adam wanted to start the PowerPoint, so we don't see your slides on the side.
Sounds good. Beginning. How's that?
Better.
All right. Okay, so obviously, this is the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan Budget Workshop. So again, just to kind of update the 2021 city budget timeline. So this is really the kind of Kickstarter to the 2021 budget, which I'm sure we can all agree, talking about something in 2021 is a bit refreshing as we try to get out of 2020. So looking into obviously the schedule again, we have the common council budget review session occurring today. Then on Tuesday, October 13th, during our normal meeting, there'll be the kind of city manager budget presentation with handouts. Then on Tuesday, October 20th, there'll be another kind of common council budget review session, which again is going to be at 6 o'clock. And then if needed during our Tuesday, October 27th meeting, there also would be another review session that could occur. Then based on kind of that information, we then put in the publications that need to go out to the appropriate entities to ensure that we can adopt a budget. And then Monday, November 16th is when the financial operation manager gives the full budget presentation for the public. And then on Tuesday, November 17th, the council proposed is basically put into the packet. And then on Tuesday, November 24th, is when we would be looking to have a public hearing and then asking for the common council to adopt the 2021 Platteville budget, and then also the CIP. So just reminder of kind of those dates and timeframes, we'll continue to send out kind of updates and make sure everybody knows about that. But just to kind of go through the highlights of what we kind of want to talk about tonight, obviously, is I just want to kind of give everybody a brief update for those of you that are kind of new to this process or in the audience haven't gone through this. Talk a little bit about what exactly is a capital improvement plan. What are some of the funding sources that are incorporated in a CIP? So that's obviously the shortened version of capital improvement plan for those of you that are new. Give a little brief, brief history on Platteville's historical CIP information. Talk a little bit about the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan. Go over some brief request breakdowns to kind of show you what is in that plan. And then go through the city manager recommendations of kind of where I see, you know, recommendations of what could be funded. And then that really opens up kind of the question and discussion period for the council to look at any, you know, changes that you would like to see, suggestions of items of, you know, potentially what would happen if we funded this or if we did that differently. So that's kind of the game plan for tonight. So just to briefly kind of go through what a capital improvement plan is, it contains, you know, all of the individual capital projects, equipment, purchases, and major studies for a local government in conjunction with construction and completed, and completion schedules, and in consort with financial plans. The plan typically provides a working blueprint for sustaining and improving the community's infrastructure. It coordinates strategic planning, financial capacity, and physical development. And a CIP stands as the epicenter of a government's planning, public works, and finance departments. So typically, what you're going to see in a capital improvement plan, it's going to have a listing of all the capital projects, equipment, and major studies, a ranking of projects, a financing plan, a timetable for the construction or completion of the project, and then a project justification. So those are the items that obviously you saw in the packet where what happens is a staff, we ask everybody to kind of come up with what they would like to see over the next five years, justify that, talk about funding sources, et cetera. So to kind of bridge into the funding sources, there are a couple of different ways that a CIP is funded. The first is obviously through general obligation bonds. So this would be with common council approval. The city borrows money for specific improvements by selling general obligation bonds. It's a flexible fund source that allows the city to maintain some of its highest priority capital assets and programs, particularly those that aren't eligible for any other fund source. So typically, your general obligation bonds and as the city has been designated towards road projects that are not funded through either grants, or it's big ticket items that, you know, are unknown projects, whether it's building improvements, something like that. Then the next area obviously is property taxes. So revenue received from property tax payments to the city. You know, property taxes are mostly used for the operating budget, but finance allocates a certain amount for capital projects each year. And we'll get into kind of a little bit of what, you know, historically has been funded by the city through that. Obviously, then there's federal funds, so loans and grants from the federal government, which include, you know, community development block grants, highway funding, transportation enhancement grants. Then the other source of funding is reserve funds. So typically, as we've talked about, for those of you that have been on the council and those that are new, we have used the general fund unassigned fund balance reserve in the past to supplement some of the funding needed, therefore reducing the amount of liability that needs to be funded by property taxes. Other sources of funding, obviously, then are county grants, local improvement aids, you know, private money through donations, et cetera, cost sharing, you know, for example. So just to go through a little bit of kind of the history of the CIP data. So when we're talking about borrowing, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. So with the state, there actually is a debt limit policy that the state has that you cannot borrow more than 5% of your equalized value. So just to kind of give a little bit more, you know, data to that, in 2020, the city of Platteville's equalized value is at $726,103,000. So the state borrowing limit is essentially 5% of that number, which is $36,305,015. So that is under state statutes, what legally the city, if it had to, could borrow up to that amount. As you know, you typically don't want to do that because then that means we can't borrow anything after that. So what also has been done, too, is, you know, the principal outstanding in 2020 was $20,549,931. So we have about 56.6% of outstanding principal that is towards that 5%. So really, there is a cap of about, you know, a little over 40, you know, 4% that could be borrowed if the city had to do that. One thing that the city has undertaken is we actually have a policy that we limit our debt to only be 3.5% of equalized value. So running through the same scenario again, our city imposed debt limit is $25,413,511. So with the principal outstanding right now, we're at about 80.86% of that 3.5 cap that we have. So there's about 20% that we can utilize, you know, in borrowing and still be within that policy that we have. And historically, as we talked about with kind of levy supported debt, as part of the financial plan, we have tried to borrow only the amount that we have retired of principal in the previous year. So in 2020, we are going to be retiring about $1,240,000. So historically, that has kind of been the levy limit, you know, levy debt limit cap that we have put on projects. And we're going to discuss kind of how that impacts the CIP in future slides here. Another thing to consider then, too, obviously, as we talked about is with the funding sources, is the general fund unassigned fund balance. So our financial policy requires that we maintain that fund balance to be at 20% of general fund expenditures. So in 2020, we're projecting an unassigned balance to be at about $2.4 million, which essentially is 28.14% of our general fund expenditures. So historically, what we have looked at in the financial plan is that we would be allowing $300,000 to be assigned to fund the 2021 CIP. So this, if, you know, everything is just perfect and follows this way in the financing, there'd be about 2.1 million remaining in our fund balance, which still is 24.7% of our general fund, you know, budgeted expenditures. So we still have about 4.7% in the future that could be utilized to fund our, you know, CIP or specific kind of projects that are unexpected. And as we know with COVID-19, you know, the revenues and expenditures continue to be unknown. So that's why it is important to try to maintain that 20% and even consider having a little bit more just for, you know, unexpected projects. So then this just kind of shows you, you know, what was presented in the Eller's, you know, five-year kind of financial modeling plan. And so as you can see in the green area, obviously, any new debt that we incur adds to obviously the tax rate. So what we want to consider is obviously with anything that we continue to borrow, we want to ensure that there is still going to be the financial flexibility to handle that in the future. Because in the past, you know, talking with council and talking with, you know, staff, what happened is we did a lot of projects all at once and kind of backloaded that debt, which caused a little bit of, you know, kind of what you're seeing here, these, these bumps in, you know, our property tax levy and our, and our tax rates. So those are things obviously that we all have to consider with the capital improvement plan and with borrowing, how that all falls into kind of the overall, you know, tax levy and also tax rate that the city is going to have. So what you see here is just kind of a brief history of the last kind of three years of primarily what has made up CIP funding sources. So as you can see, you know, we have a wheel tax that was implemented, and that primarily goes towards, you know, road repaving, road reconstruction that is done. So you can see that's been about 115 and kind of has been, you know, particularly anywhere between 120, we budgeted 120. We're anticipating in 2021 to be about 110. Some of the other things obviously are intergovernmental revenues. Those particularly are, you know, as you can see in 2021, the main reason that that is so high is because of obviously the Business 151 project. So that is federal, you know, and DOT funding that we're going to get. So a lot of that is kind of what falls into those intergovernmental revenues. It's revenue we receive from the county or from other sources. Then we have the general fund taxes. So obviously, this is the property tax. So historically, in 2018, we levied about $405. In 2019, it was 196. We're anticipating in 2020, it's going to be 350,5990. And then projected right now, as we'll get into when we go through the city manager kind of recommendations, we're anticipating right now levying about $380,000 of taxes to go towards the CIP. Then, as we've talked about throughout the financial planning, there's the general fund transfers. So we've levied, as you can see, we've, you know, moved money from the unassigned fund balance to cover CIP expenditures. And as part of the financial planning, we're going exactly with what the financial plan is recommending, with $300,000 being allocated from the fund balance to cover the CIP. Then obviously, there are some other sources of funding that occur, as we've talked about, which has either been donations, sometimes it's Park In fact peas, et cetera. And then the last conversation point is obviously the debt. So that's the general obligation debt that we have issued. So as you can see, we've been about, you know, 1.2 to anywhere between 1.1 million historically. And this is going to be something we'll have to discuss, or we'll be asking for feedback from the council on how we want to approach this year's, you know, debt issuance, because it is something that we are proposing exceeding what has been our normal limit. Now, what that means is obviously that's going to have an impact on future borrowings, you know, and potentially how that could impact the tax rate. But we'll get into that a little bit later on here in the presentation. So just to kind of highlight some of the, what is in the capital improvement plan for 2021, there was a total of over 7 million of capital improvement projects submitted. Over 2 million of that requested, was requested to be funded by tax levy. 2.1 million was requested to be funded by city borrowing. 1.5 million is anticipated to be funded by grant support. And 1.2 million is anticipated to be funded by another source of funding. So again, just recapping, historically, the city has allocated the following towards CIP. $750,000 generally has been comprised of property tax levy and general fund reserve support. And then obviously, again, with the financial borrowing consisting of levy supported principal paid off in prior years, we have not typically borrowed more than that. So in 2020 would be if we were to continue to follow that kind of mindset, would be $1.2 million. Just something to consider as we go through not only the capital improvement plan, but also the budget process, is this is a pretty general consideration or concept to consider is that if you would want to increase property taxes by 1%, that would result in about $40,000 being added to the general fund. So for every 1% you raise taxes, that nets about roughly $40,000 into the general fund to be used for obviously expenditures. So just to kind of give you some highlights of what particularly makes up the 2021 capital improvement requests. As you can see, the majority, 74%, is street repairs. So that primarily is what makes up the majority of our capital improvement plan. 9% then is street equipment, which is to be expected. You know, the majority of street equipment is your typically your higher expense. We have some options for the municipal building, as we've been discussing, and again, with having an older building, cost is going to be more. And then there's, you know, kind of a sprinkling of other areas with IT, the taxi and bus, parks department, museum, and police. And then there's, you know, kind of a sprinkling of other areas with IT, the taxi and bus, parks department, museum and police. This again is just another way of breaking out that kind of pie chart with dollar values, so as you can see from the streets repair side. There's about five point two million dollars of projects that are in there. Six hundred thousand of projects related to equipment, five hundred and thirty is related to the municipal building. And then, you know, it's kind of a sprinkling of other areas that you'll see as we get forward. So now I kind of want to dive into a little bit more specifically with what you saw in the. You know, capital improvement plan and some of the recommendations that I see kind of as the city manager. So one of the first areas, obviously, that was submitted was in regards to the municipal building. There were three projects that were up for consideration. One obviously is the renovation of the first floor, so what this entails is. This is currently where the old kind of water and sewer department used to be. And the concept that was developed was to look at potentially having that become a training space. You know, the possibility of moving the. Platteville Housing Authority into that location, but mainly it is to redo it and create kind of a training. Slash space that could be rented out or utilized for, you know, conferences or meetings, et cetera. The other area that we potentially looked at was the renovation of the second floor, and that obviously is the council chambers. So that's specifically looking at, you know, completely renovating that, updating all of the kind of, you know, systems with TVs, et cetera. You know, updating the cameras, the council, you know, the way the council sits, looking into all that. And the final one was a city hall exterior maintenance, which looked at, you know, some of the issues that we're having, obviously with the roof and some of the. You know, portion of the outside of the building, so. When I reviewed obviously these requests, some of the concerns that come up obviously with COVID nineteen is we are unsure of when the next time will be. When you can have a large gathering of people or events, so. There was some thought process as to, we feel, we do feel that both of those projects are certainly valid. But with the uncertainty of going into 2021 and when that would occur. We felt that the best, or I felt the best utilization of money would obviously go towards some of the exterior maintenance that needed to be done, so. What you're seeing there is I'm recommending that the thirty thousand dollar expenditure that would be funded by tax levy would be a part of this consideration.
Question.
Yes, Ken.
Are we going to come back to all these forty things and discuss them, look at them more individually later on?
Yes.
Come back to them?
Yep, so my thought was I would just, I would walk you through my recommendations or what I'm seeing, and then that opens up to then. As you said, if there are specific items that, you know, you feel are higher priorities or want to move, that's when we would get into that discussion.
When will we do that?
Right after this, that's next.
Okay.
And that would be after we get through this page, 2021 CIP city manager recommendation.
Yep.
I was looking at each each individual one, and I like to find out about item two municipal, what it really means. For what's going to be built. Even though we don't recommend it. Anyway, I wanted to find out when this, these all will be covered. Tonight. Okay, covered tonight.
After we go through the overview here.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, nope, I've got a note to, we'll go back to that right after this, and that can be the, one of the items we talk about, Ken, so not a problem, I will explain kind of. Howard and I can both explain where we came up with those numbers and what that entails. Under the, under the parks department, so there were four items that were submitted specifically related to parks. There was a campground improvements and expansion, a dairy day shed improvement, tennis court resurfacing. And the replacement of a nineteen ninety-eight two-wheel-drive pickup. So all four of these items are items that I am recommending that we fund. And some of them are a mix of with the campground improvement and expansion, that's a mix of tax levy as well as impact fees. The dairy day shed improvement is a mix of kind of some partnerships with not only. The city levying, but then also getting some donations from some of the organizations. The tennis court resurfacing is something that has come up, obviously, in the parks committee has had conversations with. The Platteville Tennis Players Association as well as pickleball, so. That was something that I felt, and as well as looking at the comprehensive. Plan that the park department has, as well as what we've heard in the survey, has been trying to have a more increased focus on park and recreation. So that's why those four items were specifically included. And then obviously, the replacement of the nineteen ninety-eight two-wheel-drive pickup is again, just trying to improve the fleet and get a vehicle that. You know, has passed its term, that's twenty-two years, so we want to make sure that our our staff and our equipment continues to be updated and maintained. So again, and we can obviously go into more specifics if you have questions about that. The museum department then had two items specifically that they requested. One of them was maintenance and security improvements, which had kind of a couple of lists of different things that they would like to tackle. And then there was the train safety fence replacement that is replacing the fence that the, you know, train that goes around. And when I reviewed that information, and you know, I have a big concern when I hear safety fence. And that was one that again, as a revenue generator that the museum has and one of the attractions that brings a lot of people to that museum. I felt that at this point in time, that had a bit of a higher priority to get that fixed right away, so that's why that is being recommended to be replaced. From the police department standpoint of view, they had three items, one is a mark squad, and then two related to. Kind of the camera system server and an interview room camera system, and that obviously is one of the goals that we have in the strategic plan that we just outlined, is to improve our camera systems. So specifically, this was a project that was supposed to be funded in 2020, but took a little bit of a backburner due to COVID nineteen, so. That's why you're seeing some of the other funding source there being primarily that fifteen thousand is from the funds that were in this year's CIP being moved over. And then obviously, some new levy support. The mark squad again is just continuing to ensure that we're rotating our vehicles at an appropriate and recommended usage. Then the public works side of things, this is specifically where, you know, we can have some further conversation or the, or be looking for some further information from the council. The first two items on here is again, the Business Highway 151 Safety Improvement Project. And then the Dewey Street, you know, street repair. So as you can see, both of these items have a. You know, sprinkling of kind of funding options, but the main two to kind of focus on would obviously be the borrowing. So as we indicated, you know, our debt that was paid off in 2020 is one point two four million dollars, so. What I am requesting is that due to, you know, the fact that we do have to fund this Business Highway 151 project. And we do want to ensure that we are continuing to try to tackle, as we've seen in the strategic plan, some of our street improvement projects. This is where right now you're seeing that recommendation would be to exceed that one point two four million dollar borrowing limit that we normally have imposed. To cover these two projects. And I think it's because again, both of these projects are absolutely necessary, and when you're getting one point four million dollars in grants from the state. That's something that, you know, I think this is kind of one of those one-off or one-time exceptions that I think is feasible to go, you know, against that policy. And then look at, you know, in in future years, continuing to be as close as we can as trying to retire that debt. Obviously, then some of the other projects I'm recommending is the street repairs and and maintenance, that comes directly from the wheel tax money that we receive. So that is funding that project, there is some, you know, sidewalk repair and highway striping, that is a pretty standard item in every CIP that. We've had, and due to some savings that we've seen or some inability due to COVID to be able to do some of that. There's some decreasing funding that we can do there, but still meet the thirty thousand dollar request. And then the last one, obviously, that is on here is the Business Highway 151 sidewalks. That, if you remember, is what went in front of the council, I believe, in early kind of spring or almost kind of summer, where. There was seventy-five thousand dollars that was approved by the council to go into the budget for 2021. Where sixty thousand is obviously being funded by tax levy, fifteen is being funded by. The Dunkin' Donuts Development Agreement that we have. This is a project that we have submitted for community development block grant funding, the closed funds that the county has. So we'll see if that's a project that, you know, we've heard, this may not be one that falls into that line. But that certainly is something that we have submitted for their, you know, potential approval. And then obviously, you can see there, there are some other projects then that were on the list, but due to kind of, you know, funding questions or limitations. Are not being recommended at this time. The other side then of of kind of the final part of the CIP is hitting the public works equipment as we talked about, so. There are four items I am recommending that be included in this CIP, which is the replace of the two thousand and six aerator bucket truck number five. The replace of the two thousand and nine, one point five done, one point five ton F five fifty dump truck. What you'll see there is in the description, they had ninety-three thousand, but then they also listed a couple of options where. If we could not completely replace the vehicle, there were certain kind of repairs that could be done to extend the longevity. So that's where you're seeing I'm recommending funding twelve thousand dollars to go towards that, which if I remember correctly, was kind of the replacement of the back of the truck. Then obviously, is the backhoe and the end loader, those are two items that are on kind of a three-year replacement plan schedule. So that's again, where we don't want to get off of those cycles because of kind of government rates and affordability, so. That's why I'm asking for those two to be funded at the forty-five and seventy-five. Then there were a couple of items unfortunately that just due to funding did not get recommended, but obviously are ones we want to continue to consider and list. The fire department had two that were on here with a command vehicle, vehicle and the replacement of of the extradition tools. And those you'll see later on that if if there is ways, whereas if we find. Because of some budget changes or because of, you know, increased revenue that we find we're going to be receiving either from the state or other sources. We then could potentially look at, you know, providing some source of funding towards those items. But just due to kind of the budget issues that we're seeing with COVID nineteen, we were unable, unable to recommend those. There is an IT project that does require a network infrastructure refresh that is recommended to be budgeted. And primarily what that is related to in the description is there are some services that are going to expire at the end of this year. Which we do not want to get out of those kind of, you know, service requirements where then it would be even more costly to. Replace those or could have a dramatic impact on basically the entire city's infrastructure. So that's why I am recommending funding the first part, and then the second part is something we will have to consider with the kind of server infrastructure refresh. As potentially a future upgrade for future years. Then there's the taxi slash bus fund section where there's two items, one is the bus vehicle, which again is being one hundred percent funded by grant, federal grants. And then a little bit by the University of Wisconsin-Platteville. And then there is a taxi vehicle that needs to be replaced, and that is a combination of again, some federal funding. And a little bit of levy support, so that's why you're seeing the recommendation for seven thousand, six hundred dollars being levied there. The airport had two kind of options that they were asking for, one was either to have a reoccurring CIP. Project support line item put in to help assist in covering their local match, and that was fifteen thousand dollars. So that's what you're seeing I'm recommending that we fund. The other one was potentially they are looking at trying to go after a ten-unit T-hanger using some of the federal aviation funds that are available. And that's where they were kind of looking for either, you know, assisting and funding the entire amount, the thirty-seven, five hundred, which would be the local match. Or if we would continue to put this into the CIP, that would help them be able to get to that amount that they would need for the local match, so. That's where the recommendation I'm making is that we continue to look at kind of having this line item support for the airport and therefore would not need the. You know, specifically the T-hanger. Some of the other items obviously to consider, as I've talked about, is if there were, you know, specifically some revenue funds that we would be able to find in the budget to help fund some additional projects. The recommendations I would make would be to try to, you know, improve some of the museum recommendations that they want for maintenance and security. And then the replacement of the extradition tools, being able to fund some support there. And then again, finally, just what you saw in here is this general concept that every municipality is dealing with in regards to road replacement where. You know, the the funding mechanism just isn't there to cover some of these high-cost items, but historically, you know. I think Howard and I were looking at some information he sent me today, you know, in the, I think in nineteen eighty-one, we repaired about one point four. Eight miles of road, and if we were to fund kind of the two projects that are currently in this CIP. It's only about point four two miles of road, so. It's it's a problem that everybody is dealing with and trying to figure out, you know, how you continue to. You know, try to decrease your infrastructure from being, you know, almost a hundred years average is when we're replacing a road to get down to more of the recommendation. But as we all know, that comes with budget limitations, and that's where we kind of have to pick and choose those ones that. We feel are the high priorities in funding. So obviously, that is a ton of information I just threw at you going into the recommendations, so. The next step, as we said, is kind of looking at specifically if there are items that you want further discussion on, again, these are just my recommendations based on looking at the budget. That does not mean, you know, it is the council's kind of recommendation and decision on what the finalization would be, but. Pretty much in talking with staff and with looking at our budget and trying to figure out, you know, our 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 picture. There's still some things that we're trying to get, you know, a better understanding on or still some incomplete, you know, revenue numbers that we have yet. But what we've determined is that, you know, historically, we have tried to fund seven hundred and fifty thousand, I think with, you know, what we're seeing is because of COVID nineteen. And the anticipation of, you know, some revenue reductions and just some continued unknowns. We didn't feel that was feasible to propose that number, so what you're seeing is obviously the bottom line here is. We are looking at doing six hundred and eighty thousand this year towards levy-funded support. And where the two million number comes from are these two projects, which is a bit of a shift now. Certainly, there can be some consideration if we want to go with this one point two four, you know, number. We're going to have to do some thought process on what we want to do here, you know, what that would mean is. I think essentially, we would have to fund this because that's a highway project that's going through, and potentially then we would be looking at doing less of Dewey Street. Or if there's some other consideration that the council wants to look at, we certainly can do that. So.
Okay. So Adam, again, the amount of debt that's being retired this year is one point two four million. And the proposal is to borrow two point. Oh, one million, which is about three-quarters of a million dollars more than we're retiring.
Correct.
And the the support from the tax levy is projected to be six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Know that every forty thousand dollars that is added increases taxes by one percent. Is that right?
Right, so we're looking at funding three hundred and eighty thousand.
If we went to seven hundred and twenty, every forty thousand in there increases taxes by one percent.
By about one percent.
All right, so I'm going to start through, and Eileen, are there specific items you would like to discuss?
I don't know that I have a specific item to discuss, I will say that I am in favor of doing all we can to complete the 151 project, so that would be my priority when we talk about streets. Obviously, different situation, I would advocate for the other Dewey Street as well, but at this point, I'm, I would put the emphasis on the 151 project.
Okay. Jason, is there anything in specific you would like to talk about?
Um. Uh, what was it here now? I think it was the. The Deborah Court Storm Sewer Ditch, Howard, this is probably for you, that's not the one that's. That people have been sending complaints in, is it?
Yes, that's, Mr. Mayor. Spoke up about that, we spoke about that last year, he had, he had requested last year. And it was not funded for 2020, so what was it, a couple of meetings ago? He came back and presented information asking that it be included for funding this year. I put it in as a request and. The city manager said that at this point, he's not recommending that that be funded. But that's up to you.
Okay, how many, like, how many people does does that impact total in terms of what's going on there?
I'd have to look. Um, I'd have to look, um, there, there's probably six to ten, um, backyards that this ditch goes through, um, goes up. Uh, there's a big culvert underneath one person's driveway. So that's, that's where the bulk of this is.
Okay.
And, uh, Howard, isn't it true that Mike said that the majority of the problem is coming from water from the golf course? In his presentation?
No, the, the, the water that's going through there, uh, starts up at, uh, Smith Park Ridge Avenue. Uh, and then goes down through there, there and there's a little bit of water from the golf course over by Fourth Street that, that also comes in there. But I think the majority of it comes from up by Ridge Avenue.
But have you ma- has that hydrological study been done?
Um, not a full hydrologic study, but I, I know what the, um, what the general outline of the, um, drainage basin is. But I'd have to do a little more detail.
Yep, okay. Um, any other questions?
Um, and then for the, for the museum in terms of the maintenance and stuff, um, the, the roof project, that's already been funded, right? We don't, that's not part of the, the maintenance that we're asking for?
No, so the roof, the roof project has not been funded. That actually is one to kind of answer, um, the question that Ken had. And that is one we had Angie write, um, actually write up a grant for and submitted as potentially part of this, um, community development block grant closed project, um, that the county has. So that's where they're looking for projects anywhere between two hundred and fifty thousand and, you know, five hundred thousand. Um, and that's, we should be hearing something by, it's being presented, I believe, in the conversation that they've had with Ron Brisboi, the Grand County Economic Development Director, um, is being presented to the county on, I believe, the thirteenth or when we have our meeting. And, you know, what we've heard is that project is definitely being very well received, um, as a potential project. So, we have, we have our fingers crossed, um, but that's where we're looking at. You know, we're trying to figure out if there's a way we can get grant funding for that project first, um, before having to physically put it into the CIP for consideration.
Okay, and then you said there's other projects that are kind of tied into that grant then as well?
So there, there was a couple that we submitted. Um, so one was obviously the, uh, sidewalk project, um, on Business Highway one fifty one. We did submit that. Our feedback we're hearing is that was kind of lukewarm, uh, not, more than likely is not going to happen. Um, but we did just, or we are in the process of working on sending them something again for, um, if you remember, we had some of the conversations about Water Street. If I'm not losing my mind right, Howard, isn't that, no, Main Street. Do you want to give them the update on kind of what we're thinking?
Um, well, last year, uh, we submitted as one of our proposals for the multimodal local supplement grant, um, repairs, uh, to the Main Street, uh, large culvert down there between Preston Drive and College Drive.
Yep.
Um, we were, we were going to, uh, for the MLS grant, we were going to, uh, replace the culvert and then we were going to do basically mill and overlay from College Drive back to Chestnut Street. Um, we already started some of the mill and overlay already. Um, and in order to keep it within this, um, grant dollar target, uh, we're, we're thinking, uh, putting in a proposal just for the replacement of the culvert and associated road above. We'd have to do the rest of it through other funding.
Okay, Jason, any other questions?
Um. No other questions right now. The only one is, you know, depending on how big of an impact the, the Deborah Court Storm sewer thing is, um, and just given like our weather, weather patterns and, and how much water we've been getting recently. I don't know if there'd be a way to, to kind of look at that a little bit further, but for right now, um, yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Isaac.
Um, not a question, but to answer for Jason, it's ten properties is what's directly affected on the Deborah Court there. And that was, that's a concern for me and that property's there and it keeps getting worse and worse and everything it's, you know, like everything else is going to get more expensive as it goes on if we don't take care of it. Um, obviously the Business Highway one fifty one improvements with making sure that, um, as Adam said, when you have such a large grant, you have money to you to make sure that we can figure out a way to get that project completed. And then the last one, I always want to make sure is, so do I understand that the public transportation, the bus vehicle will not cost the city of platform any money, correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay.
It would be all funded either through a federal grant or if there were any matches required, it would be UW-Plattville.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Okay, Ken.
Okay, I have a number of questions here. Uh, the first one, and I, I appreciate where this is set up this year. You give a page number where these things are described as far as, uh, the request. And you have it on both sides of the, of the page. So very good compared to some previous years, we've had a muck through this sort of thing. Okay, municipal, I just want to find out about, um, item two.
Yeah.
And that is not on the city manager's list, but I'm curious as to whether the air conditioning has been repaired, replaced so that it's no longer dripping in the council chambers. I believe that is, is that correct, Howard?
Um. We've du- we've done some minor repairs to try to reduce the, the dripping. But this item three B, number two that you're talking about would in fact do the formal final modifications to the HVAC ductworks to prevent dripping. Uh, it would refinish the wood floor, do more painting, uh, new, new cloud ceilings, uh, new lighting, uh, we would look at a, at a new platform that we could, uh, build, um, so that, uh, council members could have some separation, um, uh, due to COVID and other things like that. Uh, we would upgrade the AV and technology, um, for the entire room while we're doing this. Uh, we would also do some repairs of the plaster walls and the cornice work on the, at the, uh, upper end of the ceiling. Um, especially in the northeast corner of the, of the room. Uh, there's been some deterioration of the, of the plaster and, and walls and, and cornice work over the years, um, specifically probably about, uh, well, uh, we stopped it about ten years ago when we replaced the roof on that section of the building. But we didn't do any of the repairs that, uh, from the damage that was caused by the roof leaks.
Okay, I'm interested in this, um, built in console. It says death. Um, this is the plat- no, the platform on the east side of the council chamber. So is this where the council in the future will be sitting? And with the council, you'll have the, uh, the screen in the same location it is now? And would the, would the people be, uh, in a different, uh, orientation as far as they'd be looking at the council? So they just turn their head halfway and look at the screen? That's what the plan is?
Um, I, I need to look at the plans fully again. But the, the general concept is that the council dais, if you will, would be on the east side. Um, where, where the staff had traditionally been. Um, and that we would use large screen TVs, uh, in different locations throughout the, the chamber in order to do the projection work that needed to be done. So that people didn't necessarily have to turn around and do everything. The, 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 the general public would be, um, you know, facing the council members, uh, so they would also be oriented facing to the east. Um, to face the council members, but with additional, uh, large screen TVs and other, you know, technologies that we have today, it would be easier to, to be able to do a lot of that, um, presentation work without necessarily having, uh, screens and, and, and other, and the technologies that we do right now.
And my final question, um, is, um, well, we're finishing the wood floor. The wood floor has nails, uh, driven through the surface and a wood floor, you, you build it so that you hide the nails. So the wood flooring may be, in my opinion, more expensive to do unless you're going to be replacing part of the wood floor to do so you remove, so that you remove the nails. So that, that, uh, one thing that came to mind. And also the, the noise factor in the council wasn't something else. In the past, we were getting what noise, uh, from both ends as far as being able to hear. So those are some questions on that one. Uh, I'm in agreement with the city hall exterior. Then I'll go on to parks, um, page four. And a question I have on parks, they want to add, uh, several locations, I believe it is, seven camp sites. Uh, do the parks, uh, is the park making money on renting out these spaces? It says they're going to increase the water electrical fees from five dollars per night to ten. Now, is that five dollars each for water and five for electrical? Or is it, uh, what's the cost? Um, know that?
Yeah, Ken, the, uh, we combine, uh, the cost on, uh, water and electrical. So it would be, it, it's whether you want just water, just electrical or both. Um, it would go up to, uh, ten dollars per night.
Are we, is the city making money? Is the city breaking even as far as revenue versus the cost for operating this, this park?
Yeah, it is a revenue center for us.
Well, your, your statement here in the third line from the bottom, it says eventually resulting in a revenue center. So when you write it that way, it, it says to me it is not a revenue center at the present time.
Sure, what I, what I meant by that, and perhaps that was, um, uh, not, not written correctly. But what it should mean, what I meant by that is that this expense will be reimbursed over a number, over a series of years, um, so that we will pay, it'll essentially pay for itself probably within three to four years of additional revenue that it's bringing in.
But right now, is it a, is it returning more revenue than the cost?
Yes.
Okay, that's that one. Then I have one on number seven. Seven is a vehicle and just curious. That's, um, Howard's department. A nineteen ninety eight, um, vehicle replacement. Is that, um, talks about a two wheel drive pickup truck. Are you going to go to four wheel drive or all wheel drive? Is this going to be, um, that's one question. Is it going to go from two wheel to four wheel or all wheel drive?
No, I might be able to take that. Um, when I priced it out, I actually put in a number based on the, um, based on a four wheel driver, most recent purchase, which I think ended up being Colorado. Um, however, I, I wouldn't say we picked out a specific vehicle at this point, um, in terms of, uh, you know, what we need, but I, I think four wheel drive would allow us to use it i- in more situations. So when upgrading, I would suspect that's the way we lean, but like I said, we don't have any definite, uh, you know, vehicle in mind at this point.
Okay, my next question is, is this going to be a four door? Because he's talking about transporting people, so you want to have some room for people. So is there going to be a four door?
I, I don't know that answer, Ken. Right now it's a two door, it's a two door vehicle. Um, again, we priced it out based on the last Colorado, which was a four door vehicle, um, with, uh, people in the back. We typically don't drive in teams of four, um, park staff typically operate in teams of two when they're out and about.
Okay, next one is museum. And that's number eight. And I, I voiced, uh, my concern as others have about the roof repair. I believe it's very important to get the, the roof repaired. Are we still using, um, kiddie pools to collect water? For this roof? I think this is very important to get this done in twenty twenty one. So I'm all for that. It's not mentioned here at all. And my next question about museum is, uh, the fence. Uh, fence replacement, what is the fence going to be composed of? It was, uh, wood. What's the fence material going to be now?
A good question. I'm looking at replacing it in kind, uh, with a board fence, a comparable fence.
What kind?
A comparable, uh, wooden board fence.
Wooden board.
Right.
But you, you need to have something that, uh, is, uh, able to withstand the, the wetness and so forth in the ground. Ordinary, uh, green lumber will not last very long in the ground. So you have to get good material to put into the ground.
Yeah, just because of the sheer length of the fence and the cost of the pressure treated lumber. That's why it ended up being, you know, higher than any of us would have liked, but, um.
Are you, are you requesting, are you listing pressure treated lumber?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's a step up from a green treated or whatever step you want to say it is?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I considered, uh, a, a creative novel idea such as, you know, utilizing a local sawmill to take, uh, a species of, what's the species of tree that is, that we're having to take down so many of now? Emerald ash boards or ash.
Ash, ash green.
But, uh, you know, unfortunately, it's not a great wood for certain kinds of exposure, especially, you know, uh, long periods of wet outdoor use and for a safety fence where we want to try to get, well, and just, and just milling lumber is surprisingly expensive, so.
A lot of them increased in price tremendously. And I've been trying to buy some and it's too expensive. I'm waiting until spring. Okay, next is, um, police department. Item ten, uh, page ten. My question is, um, have you looked at body cameras?
We have them, Ken.
Pardon?
We have them and we've had them for many years.
You have, you have cameras in cars?
We have in squad video and we have body worn video. We are moving towards using smartphones as our body cameras and our in squad, uh, videos.
So we, in people, officers, individual, they have a body camera on when they go to stop somebody, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. And then let's see. Uh, Public Works Department, the Business one fifty one, I'm in favor of that. I'm also in favor of Deborah Court. I think this needs to be done. I've been out there looking at it at least twice. It is a hazard to the neighborhood, even though you don't have a lot of people living there as far as, uh, number of homes, but it is hazardous. I wouldn't want to be mowing lawn next to that mess that's there right now. That is too dangerous. So I'm in for, in favor of the Deborah Court Storm sewer ditch. And I, I believe it's mostly going to be corrected by, uh, rip rap. Who's, that's new Howard?
Yes.
Okay, it's rip wrap.
Rip wrap and, uh, the idea would be to, uh, help, help the, uh, drainage way maybe, uh, put in some meanders and things like that. Uh, to help keep the velocities slower, uh, and things like that. But yes, th- we, we would have to rip wrap a number of, of those, uh, I think it, I think it says so on the, uh, in the thing. I'd have to double check where, where did, 21.
See, rip wrap after taken fifty utilities in the ditch area.
Sure.
Okay. So I'm in favor of that one. Uh, the main street, uh, storm sewer down there close to College Drive, I'm in favor of that one. Because, um, that, um, is not gonna go away. That's gonna, what it has to. It, um, but yes, it's, there's separation there. So it's gonna be a problem coming up again. Is that correct?
Yes, um, and that's what I was, uh, explaining earlier. I am proposing a, uh, CDBG grant, uh, to do the more permanent fix for this. Uh, this 110 is, is really just to, uh, uh, help make a temporary fix for those sections that are separating.
Okay, next is, um, I guess the 29. Item 29. And that's a trail. I'm turning to the page.
Sure.
And, um, okay. Trail, trail paving, 75,000. Split between paving and lighting, 45,000. And let's see, the money for this is, uh, coming from borrow, no, it's coming from tax levy. Right?
That, that was the suggestion. It, it's up to you folks in concert with, uh, Adam and Nicola to figure out that part.
But it's not recommended by the city manager.
Correct.
That's correct because it involves the, the levy, tax levy. But there is a suggestion here for, for fundraising for, for the trail. I, I believe in a trail, but you know, 75,000 is a substantial thing and I, I would place Deborah Court over something like this. Okay, the fire department, command vehicle, they point out it's been, uh, on the list a number of years. And that's item, uh, let's see, 31. The question I have on that is, um, how many persons are used, would be using a command vehicle? Second question is how many persons are using their own personal vehicle to do the same work? That supposedly would be doing with a command vehicle?
There are four chiefs, Ken, for the department and we currently all use our own personal vehicles.
And do you get, uh, reimbursed for use of your vehicles?
No, I do not.
You get, none of the four people get reimbursed?
Correct.
There's no gas mileage, no, no reimbursement?
Nothing.
And how much? Do you know how much? How many miles are, are per year? Do you keep track of the miles per year?
I don't, I don't keep track of it because it's not reimbursed, Ken. So I, I don't know what that number is.
Well, I was just trying to get at the idea of cost, you know, whether buying a $60,000 vehicle is gonna be cost-effective versus, uh, re- reimbursing people.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't have the answer to that, Ken. And that can vary by year to year on call response and so forth.
Okay, I guess my last one is on airport. Um, I think I've asked this before. Uh, airport still owes us for a, um, loan that we gave them for hangar from years ago. That 50,000 some dollars. Dennis is there, he might know the number.
Dennis or Nicola or Elaine, what is the remaining balance on the airport loan for the hangar?
I don't have the number in front of me, but off memory, I think after the end of this year, it'll be close to 48,000 total.
Okay, and I, I, going back on a question and talking about, uh, tools for extracting people from vehicles, um, I was curious as to what this, uh, cost is for airbags. So 10,000 airbags, this is item 32. Uh, 10,000 for airbags, I could see cutters, spreaders, rams, combi tools, I guess that's what that is, airbags. What, what is that for?
Those are the lifting bags, Ken. They're, um, they're like flat, heavy-duty bags that you put in and we add air into them. They allow us to lift vehicles, like if somebody was trapped underneath of a vehicle. Or, or whatnot, they're, they're big lifting bags that lift, you know, um,
Okay.
three tons of, of, of weight.
And then my last question is, um, all these net for, network infrastructure refresh. All those recommendations came from computer net or whatever you call it? There's no person, there's no?
Uh, yes, those, those recommendations come from Compinet, which is our IT services provider.
But there is a person here that comes to platform, I believe.
Yes, Amber and TJ, I believe, are both on the Zoom call if you have specific questions about those projects.
Okay, and then, um, public transportation, um, page 36. Um, it says, want to get a new vehicle and, um, it says with, with a new ADA capable van, is the present van not ADA capable?
All, all of our current vehicles, we have four, um, taxi vehicles and all four of them are ADA capable. We're just saying that we would, uh, maintain it as an ADA capable van.
And the new one would be ADA capable?
Well, the, the one that we would be replacing is also ADA capable. But we're maintaining that capability.
Okay. The way I read it was that you didn't have it in the present van. Okay, okay, that's, that's enough for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. We'll move on. Kathy, do you have specific questions, comments?
Uh, yes, um, this is with, this being my first go-around with this, this is extremely difficult. I see the need everywhere, but I would really like to see that Deborah Court storm sewer issue addressed. When I read the details, I mean, if there are utility lines in that ditch and there are children there, when it floods, I don't know what kind of an issue. I really think that that needs to be addressed. Um, especially if it, it was, uh, set to be done this year, last year. Um, I think that it's, it's only gonna get worse. And then, um, I know that I, we're trying to squeeze dollars. The, Howard and, and Adam, I just want to bring up the business 151. Uh, I know you know what I'm probably gonna bring up is that pedestrian crossing at Staley. I realize there's a, um, a grant involved in the city's, uh, input in that. But is that, have you heard anything back from DOT? Is there any wiggle room where, um, where that piece of that project could be removed?
I'm, I've, I've worked with them and I don't see how we can take that back out now. You know, and, and the thing is that, that that's part of the 90-10 portion of the funding. So we're getting the $9 for, for, for $1 of city money towards this.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I'm, I'm, I'm just bringing up the issue where, uh, personally, I have a, a serious, serious concern about the, the implementation of that crosswalk for safety reasons. And, um, I know that the Chamber of Commerce also does. Um, it is literally pedestrian crosswalk with an added short section of crosswalk where people are gonna be funneled into an extremely busy driveway at a welcome center. So if there's any kind of cost savings, I'd like that to be, to be looked at again. Um, especially because of all the impetus putting, put on the, the pedestrian safety issue at 151, 8081. Uh, um, if that wasn't gonna be addressed, we might be talking a different story. But I'm, I'm looking through here to find $75,000 to address Deborah, Deborah Court. Um, I think that we should, we need to make that a priority. And, and as I'm looking at it, I think, um, for, for my part, we look at safety with all of this first. That's it.
Okay. Uh, Robin.
Robin, I don't know where you went.
Until this minute, so she might be ducking in. Um, I, I don't have too many questions. I guess I was wondering about Dewey Street, if you had presented to us or not. Was there any way to divide that project into, or was it really cost prohibitive to do that?
I, in, in the, in the request forms, I do say that you could, uh, cut it basically in half. Uh, I have an estimate. Uh, it would get us from Water Street basically up to Second Street. You know, instead of being a little under a half a mile, we're, we would be on a little under a quarter mile of, of new streets being done. The reason why I'm saying Second Street, you know, one is it's a, it's a logical termination point. The other is that it's, it's basically the, the top of the rise. So, you know, when you're doing things like sewer and storm sewer, you know, y- it's, it's a lot easier to do those, you know, up to the top of the hill, if you will, rather than piecemeal. Um, let me see what I've, what I said there.
Uh, Howard?
14.
Our current replacement schedule for roads is now about 110 years?
Give or take, yes.
Okay. So by, and this is, uh, actually 2,215, 18 feet, it's less than half a mile.
Correct.
Okay, roads cost a lot. And this doesn't include the water and sewer part?
I mean, if you, if you look at item number 14 in the sheet, I break out the water and sewer, but that's not included in what the city manager, uh, in, put in this, uh, budget document.
Actually, the water and sewer portion is the million 50, um, in the other column?
Oh, yes, there is.
Now, water and sewer is the million 50?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be borrowed by water and sewer?
Yes.
Versus the 12 million, which would be borrowed by, okay.
1.2 million, yes. Just gave me like.
Pardon me, not 12, 1.2. I just saw 12.
You just solved all our problems.
And I would also mention the Deborah Court. I, I think it's gotta get in there. Um, I would have said the main street as well, but your comment about addressing it in another approach, I'm not sure. You know, I guess wait on that along with the, um, museum roof, if that doesn't come through the other grant, we're looking at having to do it regardless at some point, so. I think most of my questions and concerns have been brought up by other questions. I had curiosities more so than, um, although on like the interview camera system at the police department. And if I, was the squad on a rotation and also like the three-year rotation that it's just kind of built in there, so. I just don't recall the interview camera system being there last year. And it bubbled up, or, or was it carryover? I'm not sure as a ongoing request, but.
The camera system server was the carryover item. The interview room camera system and the site surveillance cameras at the PD is a, a new item for 2021.
Do you have cameras currently that need to be improved upon or there's not anything there?
There are cameras existing, but they're 10 years old and the DVR that is managing them. And the cameras themselves are 10 years old and the technology is not keeping pace with a lot of our partners and law enforcement that, uh, need to use the video that, uh, we provide for evidentiary purposes.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions on right now.
And Doug, does, uh, marked squad, regular replacement of a marked squad with a replacement mileage of 125, how old is that car?
It averages about three and a half years.
I mean, folks, I've heard, I've heard what people said. Uh, I, uh, I understand about the Deborah Court thing. I, uh, I, I would like to know if that includes engineering fees?
Yes.
So this is because that, that's like about 10% of a project, right?
Yes.
So adding 75,000 to the city manager levy impact budget would add 2% for taxes. Uh, Adam, can you tell me, uh, where we are right now? Uh, to your knowledge, Nicola and Adam have been working on now the operations budget at the same time. So as we think about increasing tax levy here, uh, tell us how we're doing elsewhere.
I, I would just say that you'll notice that, uh, the way this project was presented was that the 75,000 would be funded through borrowing. Um, and I, I would also say that while, um, I think we have to be very careful about, uh, borrowing, um, beyond the self-imposed limit of the levy-supported principal that was paid off in the previous year. At the same time, that is not sustainable, um, over the long period. So I think we've talked about that over several years now, that, that self-imposed limit was to, um, was to get us past a, uh, a debt service crunch, um, that was straining our resources in terms of, um, how much tax levy, tax levy that was absorbing. Uh, we're not quite beyond that crunch yet. Um, I would say a couple more years, but it all depends on what happens to property values in the city and any development, those kinds of things. Um, and that's why we do the financial plan each year because it, it helps us to project out what things are looking like. Um, having said that, uh, I would say that it would be a very small impact on the overall borrowing, um, the 75,000. But, um, a much larger impact on levy if we were to support that through tax levy. Um, and then finally, I would, I would again, uh, I, I would, I would recommend caution because if you look in the column to if you look in the column to the right of the titles of each of those projects, there is a number. And that number corresponds to the prioritization by the department head, so specifically by Howard on, on both the equipment projects with Nick's input and then also on these various kinds of construction projects. And so Deborah Court, while it receives a lot of, of input from the community, is actually lower in the priority than the alley conversions in the Pine Street parking lot. Howard can speak to that, but, but yeah, you know, I, I would, as a financial person, I would just recommend that if this project was to make the list, it would be through borrowing rather than through the levy.
And so Nicola, then you're saying you would, your thought would be we would exceed our self-imposed limit by almost $850,000?
As a one-time, yes, I would. Because the, the Business Highway 151 project, it, it kind of grew legs. At one point it was, actually, if anybody hasn't noticed in your packet, the, it's the, the, the summary list is double linked to the actual descriptions of the projects. And on that one, it was actually 10%, 90%. But over the course of the development of that project, the amount the city had to contribute has substantially increased. And so that has created a drain on our resources for other projects, reconstruction projects in, in 2020. So as Adam pointed out at the beginning, you know, you, you could either fund Highway 151 and not fund any other street reconstruction in 2020, or you could cut Dewey in half, or we could go over the limit.
Okay, Adam, do you have something to add here?
No, I think what, what Nicola said is, you know, I think kind of valid is I would caution with unknown still yet with our operating budget, I would be very cautious of adding anything to the tax levy, because I think that's already going to be a, you know, question as far as COVID goes. So I agree, you know, anything additionally would be a consideration of borrowing. So I think the options that are on the table is, you know, there, if we're potentially looking, you know, if there are other projects that the council deems necessary to try to fund, one option would be, as kind of Howard indicated, you could split Dewey up, where if you look at, you know, that's a borrowing project. So that would reduce a little bit of the borrowing, but that's not going to have much of a, again, you're, you know, you'd be able to reduce by, instead of 1.2 million, you'd be borrowing 575,000. So that would open potentially some flexibility where if there are other projects that you would want to include in a borrowing, that's an option. You know, I think the concern that we've discussed is that's, again, with the strategic planning and everything we've heard, street repairs is a pretty high item. And as you indicated, Barb, we're at 110-year cycle, which that, that's not good. So I don't know if we want to be, you know, tearing away at those projects. So I think, you know, there's, there's ways where if, you know, if Deborah Court is a, is a high priority, you know, are there considerations where, you know, potentially then do we delay, you know, a public works project? You know, there's $75,000, that's the end loader. That's a conversation that can be with the council. You know, you could flip those two items and fund that. The concern I think there is then you're getting out of your three-year kind of replacement cycle. So I think Howard, you know, that's going to possibly increase our costs then, who knows? So, yeah, I think that, you know, that's the struggle I looked at too, is trying to find, you know, from a recommendation standpoint, I understand the concern that's coming, but as Nicola indicated, from a priority standpoint and from the roads, you know, I think it's, it's going to be tough if we're, because my recommendation still would be if you're, if you're looking at, you know, wanting to exceed that debt limit, I don't think you want to go more than those two projects. I think, you know, the, with future years, that's going to be, you know, always a question mark. So I'd be, as Nicola indicated, we want to be very cautious about exceeding that debt limit more than we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would also just, and just to agree with Adam. I think that we have to exercise caution on what drives adding to how much we borrow, because that can open a floodgate, no pun intended. So, yeah, I think, I think we have to think about that carefully.
Um, I do have a question about the aerial bucket truck. There's a budget number of 138,000. And then it said new or maybe used. Is there a possibility of, I mean, and basically it said, tell me how many, could you tell me how many bucket trucks we have and how they're, how they're allocated? I mean, this one you described as the one that we use to put up banners. I think, as I recall, it was like, yeah, something about banners on Main Street or something like that.
Um, let me, let me look at that again. It, it's used for signs and, and other, other tasks that are relatively lower to the ground. You know, streetlights, stoplight repairs, things like that. We do have a second bucket truck, which is a taller one that we use for trees and, and other things that are, you know, 50-plus feet in the air. This one is, is used very extensively. What we're, what we're saying is, you know, we don't have anybody who is, who has told us that they've got a used truck available, that will be available in January or February, but we're always looking that, you know, if we can find something that, that we can save a few dollars on, that, that is a good piece of equipment, a good used piece of equipment, we'll, we'll go ahead and get it. But this one is a, is a very, very highly used piece of equipment.
Okay, and, and doesn't Alliant Energy do our spite repairs? I mean, they, they just did the two that I reported. Does Alliant do?
Oh, um, Alliant does most of the operating and maintenance of the large Cobra head lights that are on the standard wooden poles. The city owns the decorative light poles on Main Street and the roundabouts and such like that. So we're the ones who need this bucket truck to do those repairs. We also own the, the traffic signal lights. And so whenever we need to do any repairs to the traffic signals themselves, this is what we use that truck for. We use it for installing signs and, and that sort of thing.
Okay, so I hear that at least three council members think that we need to, maybe, maybe four, think that we need to do the Deborah Court storm sewer ditch. Regardless of its priority that's been assigned. And I haven't heard anybody talking about removing any substantial amount of money. Kathy talked about a crossing, but since it's nine to one, I'm certain we wouldn't be saving $75,000 if the Staley crossing were to be removed. So that would, I don't think result in 75 grand. Is that true, Howard?
I would have to run the numbers, but I, I highly doubt it.
Right. So it, that, that doesn't result in 75 grand. So if there's consensus to add Deborah Court at 75 grand, then there's the discussion of, well, let's just start through. Eileen, how do you feel about only doing half of Dewey Street?
That will still put us over our borrowing amount though, right?
Half of Dewey Street would be 6 million. I don't, I don't, I don't know if it would go out to
I think so.
6 million. So six and eight would be 1.4. Yes, we would still be about 300,000 over.
And so then if you're talking also about adding the Deborah Court, now you've got another 75,000, so.
No, that would include that 75. So it'd be 608, that's 1.4, 1.4, it'd be about 1.5. That's about 300,000 over. Isaac probably has the numbers better than I do, but that's my, that's my quick. So are you, are you trying to say you're in favor of doing half of Dewey Street?
Uh, I could, I could agree with that. I'm not, you know, I'm not excited about borrowing more money than we are relieving on our debt. So if the majority of the council feels that we should be doing both these projects, you know, I can go along with it this year, but I think that all we're doing is pushing the problem down the road, because if we borrow more money this year, then there's going to be less money next year.
And, and that's a concern I have, knowing that we have a fire safety, a fire service planning document out there, and if we're really going to address fire eventually. Isaac, how do you feel about half of Dewey Street or adding to the tax, or adding to the borrow so that we're almost, well, at least 800,000 over, I've now lost, I didn't write it down, but I think it's 880 over.
I'm not too thrilled about only doing half the project, as it would get us behind again on our street reconstruction plan that we have. We're already far enough behind on that as it is. I definitely would like to see Deborah Court in there if possible, even if we do have to do a little more borrowing than normal. I guess Nicola, I have a question for you. The bond that would be paying off for the 2020 amount of 380,000 at 2.23%. Have you talked with Ellers at all about roughly what interest rates are right now, or what we'd be getting, or paying?
Um, we, we just issued earlier this year, and we got a very favorable rate. I'm, I'm just thinking how quickly I could pull that up. Yeah, it's going to take me a minute to pull that up here, but I want to say it was less than 2%. It may have even been less than 1.5%. It was very low.
Okay, so that would make, you know, again, you know, I brought this up at the other meetings, you know, we've got a chance here to, you know, potentially take advantage of some extremely low interest rates. So if we can start dropping a half a percent, 70, 0.75% on a bond that we're paying off this year, you know, that's, that'd be about one of the only reasons why I would say borrow more money, is due to the fact of the, of the low interest rate cost of borrowing money.
So you're saying then that you would be in favor of leaving Dewey Street as the full amount?
Yep.
Because it's not even a half a mile. And adding the 75 so that we would be 845, almost 846,000 dollars over our 1.2.
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay. All right, Kathy.
Boy, I don't know. I hate that 110-year cycle. And I agree with Eileen. I really, I don't like, you know, having to do this, but I guess I'm, I didn't agree with Isaac. Maybe now is the time because of interest rates to do it and basically just really check ourselves next time around that, that by add the, the business one, or the Dewey Street Business 151 and that Deborah Court, I think to me are the, the big priorities. So I really, I, I guess I would be in favor of doing that.
Okay, Ken.
I'm in favor of Deborah Court and I would need more borrow.
And what?
I'm in favor of more borrow if it means we have to do that to fund the court.
Okay, you're in favor of more borrowing if it means, so you want to do all of Dewey Street plus add 75 more to our borrow?
That's right.
Okay. Jason. Can't hear you.
How about that? I'd like to see the, the Dewey Street project fully funded. As I said before, you know, I, I want to see the Deborah Street Court project get done. That's been, I think, a couple of years that we've been getting concerns about that. It seems like this year, the, the 810,000 for the 151 safety improvements seems to be where we're like, like that, that extra cost. And I don't know, it's probably hard to predict or, or look to next year. Like, is there any other, you know, one-time costs like this that we can anticipate? Or is next year going to look a little bit more, you know, kind of even in terms of the budget?
I don't, I actually don't know how to respond to that. I think, Jason, you can see down below the reconstruction projects that would have been reckoned, Cedar Street, Jefferson Street and Soden. And those are per replacement schedule. Howard, were those per replacement schedule for this year?
What that means is if we were to, to get from that 110-year cycle down to about a 40-year cycle, those three additional streets would have had to have been added to get us down to that level. What I did was I pulled Cedar Street from 2022, Jefferson from 2023, Soden from 2024 in order to make that happen. I, I originally had those in those different years, assuming that we were still going to have the, the limitation on our borrowing, the.
Which we will, because we're talking about a one-time. I hear people say one time. Now, you know, I, I, you know, it's really easy at budget time to say now, oh, but let's just do it this one time. So Robin, what are your thoughts?
I do think the 151 project is pretty exceptional and needs to happen. And it's hard to bump our other projects like Dewey Street just because of that opportunity. Floated the idea of splitting it, but I am, for like reasons that Isaac mentioned, because I think there'll be a lot of community support around the 151 project. It's a hard year to say we're deciding to increase expenses when we feel like there's a lot of uncertainty, but I would be in support of going ahead and borrowing beyond our one-time exception there. And the other thought that I've had, I guess, through this process is like something like $75,000, how do departments respond to carving off the, for each of their items, you know, 5,000 or something, if we wanted to just gather some other change for another project? So I'm looking at things like tennis courts, like is that a hard 25,000? Or do you kind of bank on having some wiggle room and then it carries over to general fund or something? So just understanding that more. I don't think that anyone's looking to do that right now this year, but each year it kind of comes back to my mind as. general fund or something? So just understanding that more. I don't think that anyone's looking to do that right now this year, but each year it kind of comes back to my mind as do we make those suggestions? So because of the borrowing conversation, I would take the 75 over and just add it to the.
To the borrow.
To the borrow, yeah.
Okay, so let's see. I have called on Robin. I have called on Isaac. I'm trying to think if I, did I miss? Jason, I've talked to Kathy, Ken, Eileen. Okay. I think everybody's had some input. So Adam and Nicola, a question, a question that Robin raised is on the tax or on the proposed improvements. So as we look at City Hall exterior maintenance, $30,000, is this, how are these numbers formulated? Are these formulated by getting, I think, is that what you were asking, Robin? Are these just kind of like thrown up and, oh, we think it's $30,000 or?
Right, I assume that there's been kind of an item list put together, but you, you know, generally budget a little bit generously to make sure that you don't get stuck without the funds to finish the project. But just kind of wondering what the habits or trends of individual departments have been to throw something at the wall and see if it sticks versus give us a hard number? Or could they wiggle, right? Like looking for a truck, could you buy a $25,000?
Instead of a $30,000 truck, because that saves $5,000. Okay. So Adam, do you want to speak to that or?
Yeah, I mean, I would say typically, you know, in what you're seeing here, when we put together a, you know, the capital improvement plan, it's based on where we think those costs are going to be. So typically it's either been, you know, we look at past costs of vehicles. I would say vehicles are usually pretty, pretty accurate because that we go off of quotes that we've received. And typically that's how we do pretty much like the tennis court resurfacing. We try to get three quotes, you know, very similar to any process that you would see with, you know, bids is we try to get three quotes and then look at a range of where, you know, the high and low. Sometimes, yes, is there some fluctuation that could occur possibly? But I would say relatively in those instances, you're not going to see a huge savings difference there. You're talking some small savings numbers, but generally the, what you're seeing here in the capital improvement plan is what we anticipate the cost being pretty much is the expense.
So in that regard, Adam, will we see the 2020 CIP as the budget and then actually expenditures?
Yes.
I'm not sure I understood the question. Can you repeat that?
Okay, so if I budgeted, let's just say I'm picking on City Hall exterior maintenance because
Yep.
I'm just, it's the first one on the list. So I'm not picking on any one. I'm just picking that one off. So right now, let's say that was budgeted in 2020, $30,000, and you went out and it cost 28,733,000, 700, 28,733. So will we see that? And then what happens to the over-under money that's left off of the CIP budget? Because I'm suspecting, and I think that's kind of what Robin's trying to say, what happens if these things come in under budget? So is the money then returned to the general? Or does that mean that the person now gets to go and, oh, the exterior maintenance on the City Hall only costs 15? So I'm going to take the, the extra 15 and I'm now going to do something else.
So, so what happens is that as we look at these projects over time, at least since I've been here and have looked at them, we'll find that sometimes things go a little bit over and sometimes they're a little bit under. Those funds do not return to the general fund. This is a separate fund, the CIP fund. And so over time, if there was a consistent, consistent experience of being under budget, then we would find that our CIP fund balance would gradually increase. And eventually, we would have some funding to be able to use to do a project. In fact, many municipalities, if not most, actually budget that way. They budget to have a CIP fund balance rather than using reserves and transfers from the general fund unassigned fund balance. And that's something that Adam and I would like to work towards. It's difficult to do in, in an environment like we have right now with coronavirus and revenue drops and things like that. But, but it's a better, it's a better budgeting mechanism. So, so I am going down a Nicola rabbit hole, but, but, but essentially, right now, we do not have that fund balance. We do not have a, a, a lot of dollars available at the end of the year that are being left over and sitting somewhere ready to be used. We are, we are using all of our budgeted project funds. As I, as I said, some go over. And so, so we do have a little bit sometimes just to cover other budget items from, for, for the ones that go over. Does that answer the question?
Uh, Robin, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought up the piece that the lenders were talking about before. I was hoping you would speak to that, that the way it would change on the, I can't even repeat what you just said, but.
The fact that we want to, to budget a little bit differently and not keep using unassigned fund balance from the general fund.
Yeah, right. I remember that being brought up before and I was thinking of it as you were starting, so I was glad that you hit on it. So thank you.
I will say that in the circumstances where a project does not happen for one reason or another, and that, then that can happen. Sometimes it's weather related. We had that a couple of years ago. We had terrible wet in the fall and some projects couldn't be completed. Or, you know, if, if we get sidetracked by something like a pandemic, you know, sometimes that means a project doesn't complete. And so then we do identify those funds and, you know, as I'm sharpening my pencil and trying to figure out how we're going to get these projects funded, I'm always looking for that. And so other department heads will attest to the fact that Nicholas says, hey, you know, what about this project that we were, are we going to do that yet this year? Or we, or can we use those funds in the following year? So the, the camera system server was one of those. So you see that $15,000 was carried over always. We are recommending that that be carried over into 2021 to help fund that project in 2021. But also additional research has, has identified that that project would actually cost more than was budgeted in 2020. So we'll need another 5,000 for that project.
Okay, so going back to the Highway 151 safety improvement, the DOT grant was just a little over 1.4 million. So our match for that was around 143,000. So the extra 600, what, 600, almost 670,000 dollars is for things that were not originally included in the highway safety improvement proposal. Howard, would you like to speak to that 600? And I mean, that's, that's really where, where the rub is, is the 667, 668,000 dollars.
Yeah, um, yes, that, that's essentially correct. One of the, one of the items listed in this form, we had requests from Pioneer Ford to adjust their driveways because the, the car carriers scrape as they go in and out right now. And they were concerned that when you put a flat spot in that driveway for, for a trail that goes through there, that it'll make things even worse. The, the car carriers will end up damaging the, the new trail, if you will. The DOT said basically, we've, you know, we've maxed out at the 1.4 million. You know, if you, if Platteville wants to do this, Platteville needs to fund it. And so that's one of them. The other part in this is, you know, working through the actual designs. When we were doing the estimates, there were some areas that we thought that we could get away with sloping back the terrain a little bit more or use the rock face as a, as a retaining wall, but the studies were showing that, that we can't. So, so those were added in. Same thing with some of the drainage issues. We've had people talk about drainage problems in different areas along there, and we wanted to make sure that whatever we did, especially with that trail, that we at least maintain the current drainage capability instead of making it less than what it is today. So all of that together added a whole bunch of money to the, to the project itself. So unfortunately, that's, that's where it is. Like I said, the, the state, actually, the state adjusted their budget once to fully fund the, the pedestrian improvements at the Water Street intersection. And, and they basically said, we're capped. We can't, we can't go back anymore on that. So that's where we're at.
And in that business Highway 151 safety improvements, there's a $30,000 other. Where is the $30,000 other?
That's
Water.
Water and sanitary. We need to adjust some things. We need to move fire hydrants that would be where the trail is going to go and little things like that.
All right, folks. Well, I didn't hear anybody talking about taking anything out of the city manager levy impact that would equate to 75. I've heard, I believe, if I heard right, Eileen may have been the only person who talked in favor of doing half of Dewey Street. I personally think we should do the whole thing. Uh, if, uh, if this borrow is taken to 880,000, are you, are you all really going to say next year, listen, we borrowed more than, you know, we borrowed almost a million more than we were supposed to last year? So that means we're going to borrow a million less this, next year?
Well, my, Barb, my, my comment is now that I'm, I'm getting into this, had I known this tight squeeze, my vote for the, the, all the additional improvements with all the sidewalk on East 151 might not have happened.
Oh, that, that 75?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's, it's that, I agree. It's the, the 810,000 that's really throwing everything off, that particular project.
And that 668 doesn't include the additional sidewalks. That's, that's 60,000 in the city manager levy impact. That's not, and 15,000 coming from Dunkin' Donuts. So, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I mean, it's, it's very, it's very difficult. Adam shared today that we are seeing decreases in some of the revenues that we had anticipated for 2020. So it's making his budget, the operations budget, very tight also. And I think there's no doubt that there'll be, there'll be at least a modest tax increase.
Yeah.
One, one thing I would just like to add is, in my experience, it's unusual to vote on something that impacts the budget well in advance of the budget itself, the budget process. So that, so that did happen for item number 18 back earlier this year. I think it had to do with timing and commitments that had to be made with the state. I'm not sure about that. But, but this is sort of why we usually don't do that because, because it commits us to something that we don't really understand the scope of, you know, until we see the whole CIP budget.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ken.
On page 29, I brought this up before. It's 29. This is trail paving and lighting. And the project is split between paving 75,000 and lighting 45,000. This is, this is to pave and light existing gravel trail from Mitchell Hall to Broadway Street along the east side of Mountain View Park. Now, I said, this has been a request, there has been a request to fund this project. Why is this project receiving such a high priority? It's in the list, is it not? 29.
No, it's not in the list for funding. It's on the list, but it's not highlighted. So there is no funding allocated for it. Either, neither are there tax funds allocated for it, nor has Adam included.
Oh, but number 29 in the, in the listing here.
Right.
Number, this number 14 is 120,000 for a total.
Right.
120,000 for the tax levy.
Right.
Yeah.
What is the question?
The question is, is it the city manager? Are you, are you requesting this or not? Because it's in the tax levy.
If you look at this, my screen, Ken, you can see right here is 29 Trail Paving Lighting Part II. They're requesting 120,000 and 120 would be levy, and I didn't include that as one of the recommendations due to.
So this, this is out?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Can anything that is not, is not highlighted in pink or salmon or whatever color that is, anything that does not have a highlight is out. Except right now, we're talking about whether or not we say to Adam, please highlight and include Deborah Court in the borrow. And then the borrow goes to So anything that's white, so neither of the Phase 3A or 3B in the, in the City Hall is included. The maintenance and secure, security improvements at the museum, none of those are included.
I got that. Maybe next time, put a line through there for the city manager.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Nicola, will, will Ellers run updated numbers with the new borrow?
Yes, what will happen is when we move forward with that, they will, when they bring the set sale next year for that, they would provide you with updated estimates as to the debt service on that borrow. I can tell you just looking at the borrow that we did earlier this year for street reconstruction, which was, the size of that borrow was 1.17 million, so 1,170,000. And that was, again, with a low interest rate in the repayment schedule for that over about 12 years of principal payments is roughly $100,000 a year. So if we're borrowing approximately twice that, we could expect to be paying approximately 200,000 a year. One thing that we can ask Ellis to look at is Um one thing that we can ask Ellis to look at is uh to um, I have to be careful how I say this because we've been down this road and it and it was it was painful. But um it's still a relative, you know, it's not a a huge borrow. Um and we could push um a little bit on the um on the principal repayments. Um push them out just a little bit, a couple of years to where uh we begin to see some light at the end of the tunnel. Um not including building a fire station, by the way, but but um you know, after Tid Five closes, uh we will be, you know, able to breathe a little bit, if you like. So so that will help us with a borrow that's a bit larger than we had anticipated.
Okay, so folks, uh I guess I'm gonna go one more time. Uh what did I say? It was gonna be two million eighty five thousand four eighty eight. Is that what you have, Adam?
Let me check the math.
You cut off a little bit, but I think you were asking about the total amount for the borrow.
Two million eighty five thousand four hundred and eighty eight.
Yep, that's what I had.
It'd be those three projects.
Which is uh significantly more than we're retiring. So I will go through one more time. Kathy, are you in favor of this additional borrow? Instead of one point, well, uh we're retiring one point four million, we would be borrowing two point oh eight million.
Ye- yes, but I do have a question with this. Again, just for procedure. When we start looking at the full budget, are we like literally signing off on this now? Is this something the CIP, something we can come back to before we finalize the final budget?
So typically, we because of um uh what what will be presented with the total budget will show the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of levy um and general fund transfer to to fund CIP. Um and that would be um then combined with levy support needed for the operating budget um for um a debt service. And uh and that at that time, then the council will review the operating budget. Um so that would be not next Tuesday, next Tuesday will be the city manager presentation of the budget. But then the Tuesday after that will be a session like this one for the council to review the operating budget. Um and then at that time, if there was some consensus amongst the council members to perhaps, you know, change how much levy is going to the operating budget and shift that to the CIP budget. That's that's definitely something that the council could discuss at that time.
Okay, that that answers my question because I'm sitting here going, what if we, if we're looking to sign off on this tonight and there's some big surprise in the operating budget that we may have to go back and and tweak something? What you're saying, Nicola, is that we are still gonna have an opportunity to do that.
Yes.
Before everything's finalized. Okay.
And and. Nicola.
Yes.
I think Kathy is wondering if it can go either way. Right now, it would be six hundred and eighty. So I think Kathy's o- other question is, if at the presentation of the general fund budget or the operations budget, it comes in very high and we decide we can't transfer or we don't want to do six hundred and eighty. It just raises taxes. I mean, you know, it puts things, can we decrease? I mean, I know you just said we could increase. The question becomes, I believe, could we decrease?
Yeah, so so that this this definitely, um that that's part of the um council's authority, obviously, is uh and I'm I'm saying this partly for Kathy who's not been through this process before and actually for Adam too. And Adam, as a city manager, obviously can uh can uh present his budget in whatever way he chooses. But but typically, what we have done in the past is we go through this process to help us um select the uh the CIP projects based on uh staff recommendation of how much um we can quote unquote afford to to fund and what seems reasonable. Of course, the whole process of balancing a budget is to is to forge this, is to try to assess, well, what do we need for operations? And typically, Kathy, we have we have funded, um we have to fund a debt service, obviously. Um and we, there's a sort of basic level of operating budget that we have to fund um unless we are considering more severe action. Um and so then really, the CIP is kind of like after those two basic things, how much can we really afford to fund CIP? Um and actually, this year, the six hundred and eighty thousand is a little less than we've been able to fund overall through um the last two years because of the pressure that we're feeling from uh mostly decreased revenues from um the pandemic. So more of that will become apparent uh next week. Uh but suddenly, to answer your question, uh w- w- once the city manager's budget has been presented, his recommendations overall, CIP and the other levy um needs, then the council will have an opportunity to review the operating budget and then discuss whether or not um they would, you know, as as Barb said, either reduce CIP, reduce something in operating, maybe shift dollars from one to the other, um you know, um or 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 something else. But uh but yeah, you have that opportunity.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ken, are you ready to sign off on uh leaving the city manager levy impact column as it's presented? And adding uh to the two borrows, the uh Business Highway one fifty one and the Dewey Street, adding the Deborah Court?
Those three things.
Yes.
Yep.
For tax. Okay. Uh next, uh Eileen.
Uh I'll go forward with it this evening and see what happens with the general um budget, operating budget.
Isaac.
I'm good with it for at least tonight.
Robin.
Good with it.
And Jason.
I'm good with it.
Okay, folks, I think we've been through this budget and talked about it. Uh I guess uh Adam and Nicola, it appears that the seventy five thousand for the uh Deborah Court Storm Sewer Project would be added to the borrow. So uh if you can uh manipulate the numbers to show that uh with Adam, your recommendations for tax uh tax levy and general fund support staying at the six hundred seventy nine one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars.
Yep.
And in the meantime, if anyone can find seventy five thousand dollars anywhere, you find a rock or a tree or, you know, I don't know, whatever.
Um there was, I I apologize um that I didn't bring this up. Actually, it was partly because when you uh unshared your screen, Adam, I suddenly saw Dennis sitting there in the left bottom left corner of my screen. And um it reminded me, I just wanted to make sure that uh the the recommendation for the airport funding is um is again, this would be a recurring CIP item similar to on the um highway striping or the sidewalk repair. And and I just wanted to make sure that the council understood that.
I understood that.
Well, nod, yes, okay.
My question is, they can carry it over from year to year?
Uh yes, so that would be the intent. So if there was a year when there was not a major project at the airport, the the fifteen thousand would still be funded and then would be carried over so that when there's um a larger project like the ten unit T hangar, um which would be partially, the match would be partially funded by the airport's uh reserves and partially um through the accumulated uh fifteen thousand dollars um over, you know, a period of years from the city.
Yeah, and that kind of goes to the concept that Nicola and I were talking about where, you know, if you have in in other municipalities I've been in where, you know, there isn't a you know, a budget pinch, and that kind of goes to what Robin was indicating, is you want to try to fund your CIP so that, you know, when we're talking about vehicles, you know, eventually, we want to get to a point where we have a vehicle replacement fund. And every year, you're funding, say, twenty five thousand dollars into that's into that fund so that you're not having to borrow every year fifty grand, you know, at a crack to cover a vehicle. So um that's one step in the direction of trying to get to that kind of budget utopia, we'll call it, where you have the ability to um just as you indicate, you can carry these over from year to year and you start building a fund balance that, you know, then you don't have to always come every couple of years and ask for such a big project. You've got some mitigation methods to decrease the cost.
Eileen, did you want to speak to that at all? I know you spoke with me about something like a sinking.
Um for those of you who are newer on the council, that's exactly what we started doing um with the ambulance service. Before we uh contracted with the hospital, we had what we called at the time a sinking fund. We always set aside a certain amount of money every year so that we had money to put toward any ambulance. That came every three or four years. So yes, I would be in favor of reaching that point again sometime for public work, let's say, because there's a lot of need for equipment for public works and or the police department with the squad cars constantly being replaced. So yes, if we can, if we can achieve that, it would take some of the pressure off of the budget, certainly.
Yeah, I wanted to give Eileen that opportunity because she said the other day, I don't know why we don't have a sinking fund. And I said, our funds are sinking. And that's the problem. So guys, uh I think uh unless there are any more questions, I think we're pretty much wrapped up for tonight. So uh we have one additional action item on our agenda, which is?
I move to adjourn.
Very good. So we have a motion by Robin and a second by Kathy to adjourn. Candace will vote.
Kathy.
Yes.
Or excuse me, cop. Arts.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Janley.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I would remind everyone that this is homecoming week at UW Platteville. And the annual chamber UW Platteville Homecoming Breakfast will be on Zoom on Thursday morning. And uh so uh Ben is giving me the thumbs up for reminding people of that. The other thing is, uh Adam sent a note about uh Good Morning Platteville, which is going to be on Thursday, the twenty second of October. It's going to be a tour of the Platteville Business Incubator. Uh certainly, anybody is invited to come. Uh actually, Adam, I'm just gonna have you notice that meeting.
Sure.
Right away. So if you can come to the Business Incubator on the twenty second for the tour, fine. We will notice that it might attract a um forum of the council, but you won't have to worry about replying back to Adam for that. So uh just those two announcements, and I know we're adjourned, but uh so be it. So so folks, have a good week. It is, I believe, Indian summer almost. Sad to say. Okay. Bye bye. Thank you.
Hi.